... meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of February 26, 2018. The time is 7:31. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilman Gettings?
Here.
Councilor Grabstein?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation by Councilman Corbett and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Infinite wisdom. We thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? All right, we have one presentation this evening. It's a city council resolution to bring awareness for the prevention of human trafficking. Mr. Myers, would you please read it?
Certainly, Your Honor. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery and is a crime against humanity that violates the most basic human rights, and whereas human trafficking victims are children, along with adults, who are recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, and other methods of slavery; and whereas as many as 100,000 to 300,000 American children, children as young as 11 years old, are at risk of being trafficked for commercial sex in the United States each year as part of the $9.8 billion U.S. sex trafficking industry, according to a report from anti-trafficking group Shared Hope International; and whereas even with the diligent efforts of federal, state, and local law enforcement, human trafficking is the fastest-growing and second-largest criminal industry in the world today, according to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services; and whereas the state of Michigan has the sixth-largest call volume to the National Human Trafficking Resource Center hotline; and whereas the Office of the Michigan Attorney General has identified human trafficking as a serious concern for law enforcement agencies coordinating efforts for training, awareness, and victim care; and whereas the Human Trafficking Commission Act, Act 325 of 2014, established the Michigan Human Trafficking Commission for the prevention, intervention, and rehabilitation to the illegal act of human trafficking in the state; and whereas on January 14, 2015, a majority of the new legislation from the 2014 Human Trafficking Legislative Package took effect to fight against the horrific crimes of human trafficking; and whereas Madison Heights is dedicated to preventing and combating human trafficking and has been actively investigating all reports of human trafficking and has made several arrests; and whereas the Madison Heights is working through a collaborative effort with the Oakland County Human Trafficking Task Force and will remain unrelenting in its efforts to end the exploitation and injustice suffered by the victims of this crime; and whereas all people must work to dismantle trafficking networks, help survivors rebuild their lives, address the underlying forces that push so many into bondage, develop economies that create legitimate jobs, and build a global sense of justice that says no child or adult should ever be exploited. Now therefore be it resolved that the Madison Heights City Council is committed to bringing awareness and prevention to the crime of human trafficking in Madison Heights and Oakland County and will strive every day to restore to all people the most basic rights of freedom, dignity, and justice. And, Your Honor, Deputy Chief Palowski is here tonight.
Deputy Chief, would you accept this resolution? This is really no cause for celebration. This is a very somber subject, human trafficking. I do want to thank County Commissioner Gary McGilvery and his colleagues in the County Commission for bringing this to the attention of Madison Heights and other cities in the county. I mean, this is one of those scary parts about running a government and especially a police force. And so, you know, this city council thinks that this is one of the most important issues that our city, our community, our police force, and our connections should be focused on. You know, human trafficking truly is slavery. So, we deeply appreciate the efforts from the Police Department, especially with collaborating with the FBI Violent Crimes Task Force and Oakland County Sheriff. Just in the last few weeks, County Commissioner Gary McGilvery and I have reached out to our other partners and other levels of government to actually try to do something more to stop human trafficking. And so, we've had commitments from the county sheriff, the state attorney general, and just last week Congressman Sandra Levin said he'll get the federal government more involved. So, we can do more than just a paper resolution. So, we can actually save these people's lives and tell these organized criminals that you are not welcome in Madison Heights. There's no vote for this tonight. It's just kind of a statement that our city is making. Would anyone else like to bring anything else up at the time, or we'll continue this conversation throughout the year? All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next, we'll be meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity to approach city council and discuss any subject. If you'd please be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less. And it's not required, but it'd be helpful if you give us your name and address. Good evening.
Good evening. Gloria Moore, 27368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens, is having another third Tuesday meeting on March 20. Over at Wilkinson Middle School, beverages and snacks are on us. We'll be discussing the upcoming bowling fundraiser that's going to be, I believe, May 4th. It's a Friday. And Myers had just called Wayne up and told him that they're going to be sponsoring five $100 gift certificates to Raff Law. Also, we're going to be having, we're joining forces with Donna Mitchell's Donna's Christmas Land for the community barbecue and picnic, which is going to be July 14. We're still working out the details. And Donna's here. Do you want to know anything more? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Does anyone else like to address city council? The meeting is open to the public. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Donna Mitchell, 27440 Park Court, and as stated, I run Donna's Christmas Land. I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself. I also have a question that I'm unsure if it is even something that's possible or not. As Gloria mentioned, we're doing a community barbecue, but one of my ideas is to have T-shirts done up where any of the Madison Heights businesses become a sponsor. We're going to put their logo on them. My question is, as far as the Madison Heights logo, is that a possibility? Is it something that we could use? Is it not something we can use? What's the process for that?
That's a good question. Either of you guys?
Yes. Your Honor, that has come up in the past with third parties and outside agencies wanting to use the logo, and it is not permitted. So, thank you for asking.
Okay. Thank you.
Meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address city council? Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary McGilvery, 926 Tangowood, Madison Heights. I'm here tonight as a representative from Little League Baseball, and I've got some plaques to hand out. It's kind of late in the year, and I apologize for the plaques getting here so late, but they change the style of the plaques a little bit, and the pictures are part of the plaque now, so that's why it took a little bit longer. We want to thank you for your support of Little League. If anybody is interested in registering for Little League, registration is now open. It's done online at madisonheightsbaseball.org. You can go and sign your kids up, and we would appreciate the sooner you do that, the better. That way, we can get all the teams and the sponsors lined up again for this coming spring. So, if you have any questions, you can get in touch with myself or with Earl Stone when it comes to baseball. First of all, the first plaque I have is for Sherman. And Sherman?
Thank you very much. Oh, thank you. My pleasure. The next one I have is for Mayor Hartwell.
Thank you, Gary.
This one is for the Department of Public Works.
I will certainly do that, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments from the public? Now's your opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Good evening, Mayor Hartwell, City Council. I'm just here to let you know, as an outside resident, my name is Jack Lloyd, former mayor of Hazel Park. As I drive through your city, which is very often, almost every day, I want to thank you and the Department of Public Works for an outstanding job you've done on the roads. You know, during the time when we had the snow, Madison Heights was out there, Sundays, Saturdays, you know, when it was really coming down, hitting the roads, hitting them hard with assault, and the side streets were excellent. You did an excellent job. I want to make sure you pass that along to the Department of Public Works, DPW. Thank you very much. Also, I was at the State of the City and learned a lot about Madison Heights. Mayor Hartwell did an excellent job. Anybody hasn't went to the State of the City, it's once a year, and I encourage people to attend that because they can learn a lot about what's going on and what's new in their cities. A lot of things I learned about Madison Heights that I didn't know, new upcoming businesses and so forth. But, and all in all, and most people do a lot of complaining, I am here to congratulate you. Madison Heights is still the city of progress. Thank you. Mr. Sherman, hope your father's doing well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi. Good evening.
I'm Colleen Porter, 30223 Longfellow. I just wanted to come up here on behalf of Less Than Yours Tiger Den Cast Number 1587, and say thank you to the Madison Heights Police Department for the awesome tour that they gave about a dozen first graders, and in particular Officer Lewis and Kenein Grimm. It was a wonderful tour, and we're very grateful.
Thank you. We'll share that with them. Thank you very much. Oh, Colleen, I know I'm asking a lot, but if, next time you're with those scouts, ask them to do like maybe handwritten thank you notes to the police officers if you haven't done it already. Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting's open to the public. All right, no one's asked to be recognized. We'll continue on with the agenda. We can go to bid awards and purchases. We have two this evening. The first is from the Community Development Director regarding the R3 Residential Road Bid Award to Delicio. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. The city opened sealed bids for the R3 Residential Roads Program on February 14. There were seven bidders, and the low bidder for the 2018 Proposal R3 Project was Delicio Contracting, Inc. Delicio bid a 2% per year increase in unit cost prices over the 2018 base bid for each of the three years, 2019, 2020, and 2021. The second low bidder, by contrast, bid a 15% per year increase. As noted in the staff report, Delicio has been a very responsive city contractor and has an excellent track record of completing jobs on time and within budget. Staff and I concur with the recommendations of our city engineer and recommend that the city council award the R3 Residential Roads Program bid to the lowest responsible bidder, Delicio Contracting, Incorporated, for 2018 in the amount of $1,394,524, and for the 2019, 2020, and 2021 R3 program years with a 2% increase in unit cost prices from the 2018 base bid for 2019, a 4% increase in unit cost prices from the 2018 base bid for 2020, and a 6% increase in unit cost prices from the 2018 base bid for 2021. And I would note for council and the public that this action would not commit counsel to any specific fiscal year 2019 through 2021 projects, which would go through council's capital improvement planning and budget approval process in the normal course with approved projects constructed by Delicio under this contract. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. What's the wish of city council on this matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the city engineer and the city manager and award the R3 Residential Road Program to the lowest responsible bidder, Delicio Contracting, Inc., for 2018 in the amount of $1,394,524,000, and for the 2019, 20, and 21 R3 program years, on a 2% increase in unit cost basis from the 2018 base bid of 2019, a 4% increase in unit costs from the 2018 base bid for 2020, and a 6% increase in unit cost prices from the 2018 base bid for the 2021 year.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to concur with the recommendation of our city engineer and city manager. Is there any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next bid award or purchase is also from the Community Development Director, and it's a contract amendment and extension for the 2018 to 19 major and local sectional concrete repairs. Mr. Myers, please?
Certainly, Your Honor. Yes. The city entered into a long-term contract with Delicio Contracting in January of 2011 for the completion of the remaining 2011 to 2017 Proposal R2 Residential Streets and the budgeted 2011 to 2017 major and local roads, non-R sectional repairs. In February of 2015, council approved a contract amendment to reflect increased concrete and labor costs. Delicio completed these projects in conformance with the contracts. Delicio has once again offered to extend their current contract for major and local road sectional concrete repairs for the 2018 and 2019 construction seasons, subject to a requested one-time 2018 4.6% increase in the concrete pavement costs only, which would increase from $53.75 per square yard to $56.25 per square yard, a $2.50 increase. As noted in a report from our city engineer, this proposed increase would remain below several recent bid prices for similar work in nearby area communities. In addition, the low bidder, which was Delicio, for our February 14 bid opening for the R3 Residential Road Sectional Repair Program, reflected substantially higher costs in excess of 24% for concrete than this proposed adjustment and extension. As noted in the staff report, Delicio has been a very responsive contractor with an excellent track record of completing jobs on time and within budget. Staff and I concur with the recommendation of our city engineer and recommend that council approve a contract extension and amendment for Delicio Contracting, Inc., for 2018, 2019 major and local road sectional concrete repairs with a one-time 2018 unit cost price adjustment for the remove-and-replace nine-inch concrete pavement portion to $56.25, with all other unit costs remaining the same. And I would note again that this action does not commit counsel to any fiscal 2019 projects, and any such projects would go through council's capital improvement plan and budget approval process in the annual course. Any 2019 major or local sectional repair projects approved by council would be constructed by Delicio under this contract extension and amendment at fixed unit costs in the summer of 2019, next year. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the city engineer and the city manager's office by approving a contract extension and amendment for Delicio Contracting, Inc., for the 2018, 2019 major and local roads, road sectional concrete repairs, with a one-time 2018 unit cost price adjustment for remove-and-replace nine-inch concrete pavement. The adjustment is to $56.25, with all other unit costs remaining the same.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to concur with the recommendation of our city engineer and city manager, thereby approving a contract extension and amendment for Delicio Contracting, Inc. Is there any discussion on this item? I had a question. One of the residents asked me what type of cement tests we perform, maybe, you know, before the delivery or when the concrete is delivered. Could someone just explain, just the basic tests that our engineers perform, just to be sure that we're getting the quality we pay for?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brad Brickell from New York Engross Engineers.
Good evening.
Yep. Essentially, what we do is we have a certified, M.D. certified inspector out there that will do, he'll do density on the patches to make sure that everything's been compacted properly, and then he will do concrete air testing, just to make sure that there's the proper air content that follows the specifications. And then he'll do a slump test to make sure that the water content essentially is accurate. And then essentially, he'll form concrete cylinders, and we have an outside company, McDonald Associates, that they will go and they'll do compressive strength tests, and they test it just to make sure it meets the 3,500 PSI requirements within 28 days. And that's done on every concrete patch. You know, they do on a relative day, a few a day, you know, they'll check every few trucks and just make sure. And we actually exceed M.D. requirements as far as how often it's tested, just to ensure that it's adequate.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other discussion from the city council? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next on our agenda will be the approval of some minutes. Can I please have a motion regarding the minutes of the special council meeting of 2/5/18?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the minutes of the special council meeting of 2/5/18 be approved as printed.
Yes, sir. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to adopt as printed the minutes from the special council meeting of February 5, 2018. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Whoever makes the next motion, I'd like you to include one correction, that the meeting ended at 9:54, not 10:54. That's the only difference. So, is there a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the special city council meeting minutes from 2/12/18, including the correction by the mayor, which was at the mayor in, not the mayor in, the meeting ended at 9:54, not 10:54.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt the minutes with one correction, changing 10:54 to 9:54 as the adjournment time for the special council meeting minutes of February 12, 2018. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, the agenda says minutes from 1:22, but it's actually minutes from 2:12. Could I have a motion for the third set of minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm on a roll. I move that the council approve the regular meeting minutes from the evening of 2/12/18, as printed.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you very much. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt as printed the regular city council meeting minutes from February 12, 2018. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Are there any nominations to our boards and commissions this evening?
There was somebody, wasn't there?
Was there?
I'm sorry. I just drew a blank on Parks and Rec, maybe?
There's, let's see, an applicant to the Historical Commission. I'm not going to make the mayor's appointment right now, but yeah, there's an applicant to the Historical Commission. Her name's Bernadette Gatausky.
Yeah.
So, that'd be a council nomination if anyone has it.
I would like to nominate, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Mrs. Scott.
I would like to nominate Bernadette Gatausky for a three-year term on Historical Commission. I don't know what slot she will be filling, because I don't have it in front of me right now.
Um, there's three terms. One expires tomorrow. The next expire in two years.
All right. So, that would be February 27 of?
2020.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor's support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Bernadette Gatausky to the Historical Commission, to the vacant term that's expiring February of 2020.
It's, Mr. Mayor?
2/28/2020.
Yeah, it's 2/28/20.
Right. 2/28/2020. Any discussion on this nomination? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, that's the only other application I saw at the moment. Does council have any other nominations? Okay, great. We do not have an executive session scheduled tonight, so before we adjourn, I'll open the floor for any closing comments from members of city council, and I'd like to begin with Mr. Corbett.
Just one item, a reminder that we keep office hours at the libraries, 1 to 3, if anybody on Fridays, if anybody would like to stop in and ask a question, file a complaint, or just want to find out about some aspect of the city. 1 to 3 over at the library. They can direct you at the desk. Usually, it's in the first room, right off the reference desk there. So, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. So, the first thing that I wanted to mention was, I don't know if people have seen in the news, but the state, having realized how significantly horrible of a pothole season that we're in, has allocated an emergency road funding that will be here in time for construction season, and Madison Heights is set to get $189,460. And so, that'll help us to be able to do some of those repairs. And I know staff is looking into how best to utilize that, but I wanted to let the public know that the state did take action, and then, you know, we'll be utilizing that money as effectively as possible. The other thing I want to talk about tonight is, kind of in addition to the human trafficking resolution that we put out there, you know, we put out the resolution, in part because awareness is so important. It's a very, very large issue, and there's so many components of it, that I think one of the things that would be great for us to do as a city, because of our involvement and because of our understanding of this complex issue, is I think that it would be beneficial for us to do a seminar or two, to be able to educate the public of what to look out for, how to spot, you know, victims or potential perpetrators. And maybe we can reach out to, you know, some of our friends on the task force, or the county, or the attorney general's office, and bring somebody in as a guest here in Madison Heights, and record that, and put it on our TV loop and YouTube channel frequently. So, I'd just like to throw that into the idea hopper. We also have a lot of great, you know, parent organizations at our schools throughout the city, and I think notifying them of something like that, we'd be able to fill the room pretty well, because everybody wants to understand more, and I think having a reputable conversation about it would be very beneficial. So, that's it. Just throw it into the hopper, please.
Yeah, Mr. Bliss, I agree. Other agencies are extending their hand to us. I spoke with the Assistant Special Agent in Charge for the FBI, Jeffrey Downey, who's worked with our city before. He does a lot of community outreach, so maybe we'll invite him. The congressmen's also expressed an interest in coming to our city and helping us. Same with the attorney general, lieutenant governor, Oakland County sheriff, and our county commissioner, Gary McGilvery. So, we have a lot of support from every level of government, and in many ways, we are ground zero for this issue for Oakland County, so we should be on the vanguard of hosting town halls, doing something. So, I agree with that. I don't know what it'll take to put this together, but we have a lot of friends who want to fix this. Anything else, Mr. Bliss?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Your Honor, council, I just want to touch base- Your Honor, council, I just want to touch base with the rest of council to proceed to schedule something, work with the police department for a, to move forward. The consensus on this?
That's fine. I was going to say that the Youth Assistance and the Crime Commission are actually looking at having speakers come in to talk to the community, and we're looking at having something maybe in the library in the evening, so anything that we can do to help as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I think you can also get a lot of support from the Madison Heights Women's Club, who has been working with that topic for probably at least two years, that I'm aware of. So they're very cognizant, especially Darlene Barrett, of what the problem is, and I know that she has dealt with people directly who have been victims of human trafficking, and I know that that has been a constant attention-getting project for the Women's Club. And so I think that would be good to include them, because they have a lot of knowledge already.
Great ideas. All right, we'll reach out to some of our community partners and those different government agencies, and we'll try to put something together. Clearly, the police department, our chief and our deputy chief, will be the leaders of this conversation. Oh, you know, Mr. County Commissioner, I'll allow you to speak, because we keep using your name.
It's, I just want to, when it comes to human trafficking, I've heard two stories from victims about how it happened and what happened, and it's really just a real tragedy for any young person to get stuck in that position. They do it out of fear that their family's going to be killed or hurt, their brothers or sisters, and the story just goes on and on. So it's a real tragedy. Brian and I have gone to a couple of things regarding human trafficking, and they pointed out in both cases that Southfield and Madison Heights are the, where the problems are largest in the county, mainly because of the number of hotels and motels that we have in our city, and Southfield has. I would urge you to work with some of the management from some of the hotels. There's just, you know, get posters put up in the lobbies of these hotels, so that if there are victims that are being stuck there, they know who they can get a hold of. More police checks throughout all the motels in town. And one other idea that came up was video cameras in motel parking lots, so that you can kind of get an idea of who's coming and going into the motels, and if it's a regular person that's stuck in there, you know, you might be able to find that out, so I just thought I'd pass those along to you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss, the floor is still yours, if you had any additional comments. Thank you for bringing this up.
Your Honor, I would just add that it's such an important issue that there's no way we're going to get everybody who's interested in learning about it in one place at one time, and so making sure that we maybe do a couple, and then we record them for playback, you know, I think that that's going to be very valuable, if nothing else, for those who couldn't come, but also as a reference point for people looking for a refresher. And I do think that there are some policy initiatives and changes that we may also want to add into the hopper as well, for, you know, some of the things that the County Commissioner just threw out there, that we probably should start discussing even in more detail than we already have. We've done a lot on this issue, but there's still a lot that we can be doing.
Great. This has been a very helpful conversation. Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Mr. Gettings, do you have any closing comments this evening?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Sherman, good evening.
Good evening. Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager, Mr. Myers?
No, sir, nothing tonight.
City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grafstein?
I just want to remind everybody that we are rebooting the Environmental Citizens Commission, so if anyone is interested to fill out an application and bring it into City Hall.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, I think Attorney Sherman should have mentioned the fact of they had a grandchild born, and I would like to, I'm giving my time to you for you to tell us about that baby.
Thank you very much. Yes, my son and daughter-in-law had a baby boy, our first grandchild. His name is Jacob Brady Sherman. My son is a big fan of Tom Brady, because he went to the University of Michigan, as did I, as did my son, but technically, he said that was just a happy coincidence, that the middle name is after his wife's grandmother, whose name was Bonnie, so, but he said it's a coincidence, Dad, but a happy one. The baby, seven pounds, he's a little over a month old, and he's the joy of our life, and I look forward to being able to play with him. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Mrs. Scott, any others?
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Sherman. That's just wonderful, when you become a grandparent for the first time. It will bring you delights you have never even imagined, you know, and so I wish you the best of luck and love to your whole family.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'd also want to recognize three people that are in our audience tonight. That would be Gloria Moore, who does so much for our seniors. Gloria, you have those meetings, and I know you contribute a lot of your time and your money to those meetings, and our seniors appreciate that. And to Donna Mitchell, it's a pleasure to meet you here in person, and thank you again for all of the love that you shared during the holidays with people that were a little unfortunate, and thank you for making it brighter for them. And to Jack Lloyd, you will never be an outsider, so I don't want to hear you say that again. You are part of Madison Heights, and we're glad we have that kind of relationship with the city of Hazel Park. It's a long time and a very good one. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Mr. Soltis, any concluding remarks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to recognize that this month is Black History Month. I think it's an important month. The library put on a couple of events. One was a play, one was a, actually it was tonight, a book reading. I'm glad they did that. I'd like to see a little bit more, if we can. I think it's an important month. I think, although it's over, I mean, there's still time, even past February, to read about it, so please do so. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. We do appreciate your attendance at these meetings. The feedback from the public is the most important part of our job, so, you know, to a resident like Gloria Moore, who is dutifully here every meeting, or 99 out of 100 meetings, thank you, and to see, you know, a friend like Jack Lloyd, Mayor Jack Lloyd, they named the DPW facility after him, drive by in Hazel Park, a giant, what, 100-square-foot billboard with your picture on it. But thank you for attending. Thank you for contributing your comments to the betterment of our city. Now, for the human trafficking resolution, again, thank you to City Council, thank you to staff and deputy chief for preparing this, and thanks for contributing ideas on who the key players need to be in the room. I would like, sometimes we include this when we do a resolution, to let's send a copy of this to our elected officials, so if staff could please send a copy of our resolution, you know, to our two U.S. senators, our one congressperson, our state senator, our state representative, our county commissioner, just so that they're informed that we are going on the record and looking for action. Oh, thank you. So again, thank you to everyone for joining us tonight. Thank you to staff for preparing the agenda. Is there any other business before council this evening? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned. Good evening.